Welcome to the City of Eureka Springs Bozza and Planning Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. At 6 o'clock, we're in the auditorium. And it looks like we've got a public hearing on our agenda to start out with. Do I have anybody here that wants to speak regarding our public hearing? All right, doesn't look like we've got anybody here. So, let's go into roll call, please.
Mike Welch.
Here.
Fergus Stewart.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
Ann Salee.
Ann Salee is absent with notice.
Tom Buford, I'm present.
All right, Pledge of Legions? Pledge of Legions to the United States of America, to the public, which stands one nation, whether or not you can do this with liberty of justice. Okay, I don't think I've got anything else for that public hearing, so... Actually, I guess I do need to do the public hearing, don't I? Are we just doing the, just, uh, public comments on public hearing, or should we do the...
Well, we had to approve the agenda first.
Well, that, but then we'll move into Planning Commission, or Board of Zoning, so...
Oh, okay, yeah, I don't think I...
I don't have anything in my packet. Do you guys have anything?
No, not for zoning.
No, not for, nope.
Okay. All right, uh, let's go into Planning Commission, because we've got nothing in Board of Zoning, and approval of the agenda. So, uh... Mike, I did not get a chance to print any new minutes out.
Okay. Did she, did she send you an email with the, updated one?
I don't know if I've got one.
I didn't, I didn't get an updated, no. As far as I know, the same, uh...
Okay, so, uh, Mike said that he had found a mistake in our minutes?
Oh.
That was sent to us. So, he had emailed Ida.
Right.
Ida said she would fix it.
She did, I got an email.
You did get one?
I did get an email with the new minute, adjusted minutes.
Can I see it?
Yeah, I did get it.
Oh, I, I've got it too.
You do?
Sorry, I didn't.
Okay, she's got it, okay. Yeah, I saw it, I saw it. My earphone's faster probably than mine, and it's like... Yeah, I looked at it, it looked okay.
Doesn't look like it's gonna be fast, does it? Oh, this could be fast, huh? Okay. Okay, so, when we get to the meeting minutes, since it doesn't look like any of us know which exact area has been changed.
Okay, you want me to tell you?
Yeah, but when we get to it.
Okay.
So, we'll leave it on our agenda right now, and then we'll, if we approve it, we'll approve the amended.
Sure.
Or the corrected version. So, um, all right, and then, as far as the, uh, agenda goes, Kyle's not here to talk about tree cuts, so we're gonna postpone that, because obviously, we've had some changes as well on, uh, our building inspector.
Right.
So, we'll postpone that. Ann is not here for B&amp;B updates.
Right.
We do need to add this to the city council's agenda, so we need to vote on that, to send that over to them, because our moratorium runs out the end of July.
Ooh, yeah.
So, we're really pushing it up to the last meeting.
Okay.
And then, um, we're going to postpone annexation, which is number six.
Right, okay.
I think that's it.
All right. Yeah, there it goes again.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yep, yep. So, I make a motion that we approve the amended agenda. Second.
Uh, we've got a motion and a second to approve the amended, uh, agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. So, let's go into new business, which is the new commercial construction at Two Judah. And we've got Mr. McGuire here, who is the owner, and this, uh, is an application to build an eight-unit multifamily structure in a C2H zone.
Right.
So, do you wanna give us kind of a, um... I think you've been here before.
Overdue. Be glad to.
Yes.
Um, I think probably a couple of you go back, we've made several passes at this property through the years.
Right.
And, uh, this is our last review of market conditions and needs for Eureka, so, we're proposing two fourplexes, uh, eight units, it'll be, uh, townhouse concept construction, two-level, uh, two-bedroom, one-half bath, and, uh, we're gonna kinda call these starter units. Uh, and, of course, these are, uh, we expect these to be occupied full-time, local resident-type livability, and, uh, as you all know, I'm sure everybody knows the site, so it's a walking distance to everything, downtown, grocery store, et cetera, et cetera. Several years ago, we were looking at rental units, and, uh, seemed like the city's made a lot of strides and progress in trying to cover, uh, rental units for, uh, our current labor market, so these are one step beyond, and, uh, I think you've got elevations and a site plan, uh, I think we've complied pretty much with all C2 requirements and city requirements, planning and zoning, uh, so, I'd be glad to answer any other questions that someone might have.
Go ahead, Tom.
How much of that site are you occupying, besides Legends there? Is it the whole site, just part of the site?
Uh, we're just part of the site, it'll be one-third acre, uh, the site's 1.1 acre, so we're still on the, pretty much, the very north end, we squeezed that as much as we could with the parking and landscaping requirements, and took only what really made sense for the development.
Uh, of course, I had the package looking at, but the print was so fine, uh, what are your landscaping requirements gonna look like? I couldn't really tell from the, you know, the smaller scale here.
I understand.
Could you just kinda describe on what you're doing on landscaping?
Sure, sure, well, we, we want it to look nice, obviously, so, uh, we'll be, you know, it's been used for years and years and years as a staging and lumber storage, et cetera, so, we, it's essentially been, uh, compacted gravel parking for many, many years, probably 75 years at this point, so, we intend to kinda reclaim a large part of that, the percentage is in your packet there, and a large part of that, we'll convert back to yard and shrubbery, and, uh, we probably will not plant too many trees, the landscape ordinance requires us to plant a tree every so often, we'll comply with that, but, uh, in general, we're gonna let the natural landscape that surrounds that kinda override what we do, and we'll just convert back to yard space. Each of these units will have a yard.
Go ahead, Mike.
Go ahead, no, you're first.
Just make sure you sneak into your mic.
Okay, um, Mr. McGuire, um, so, this, like you said, I think this property's had a lot of different unitizations, uh, I think last thing, it was a scooter rental place with a little temporary building on it, and...
Uh, well, that, that was a lease arrangement.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, that's all, that's gonna go away?
It's gone.
It's gone. Okay, okay, I thought, I thought it had.
Yeah.
Every once in a while, I see one of those, but I'm thinking it's not there, but, uh, okay.
That, that did require CUP, which I think you, you folks granted, that's been years ago now, but yes, it's terminated and gone.
Okay, okay, and, um, so, I'm, I'm glad, you know, given the situation, or housing situation in Eureka, it sounds like your opportunity is timed well. Uh, how long do you think the construction's gonna take to get it operating?
Well, we, we still haven't been to HDC, so that's the next thing on our, on our list, uh, assuming approval, uh, everything goes smooth there, uh, we would expect to break ground immediately, we're all lined up with everything, uh, we, we have contractor in-house, realtor in-house, et cetera, so, we're, uh, ready to go. So, we would expect, uh, you know, it's two buildings, so it's, it's pretty fast construction, uh, the site's level and clean, ready to go, it's been that way for a long time, so, uh, we're kinda anxious to get going, so, six to eight months, uh, I would see the first phase built out and ready for market, probably in five months, I would hope.
Okay, and, uh, you've got the, um, uh, the fire marshal and all, the, uh, I guess our, I guess our assistant fire chief is now our code person, I guess, to what I heard? Changes, I mean... Has it changed, okay, so, anyway, um, a lot of changes going on, but...
Yes.
But, uh, uh, so, as long as, you know, you've conformed to all those requirements as far as the public works, and...
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely, well, we, we haven't completed with public works, utilities are on-site, of course, but...
Right, right.
The fire marshal, whoever will be doing the, uh, plan review.
Right.
Will have a full set of plans, which is indicated on your sheet one that you received.
Right, yeah, okay, let's all ahead.
Mike?
I have a couple of questions, go ahead, jump in, I got four, three, four questions.
You know what your rent range will be at this point in time, or you, or can you disclose what your rents are gonna be, what the rents are gonna be?
The rents?
Uh-huh.
These are for sale.
All these for sale?
Townhouse units for sale.
Oh, okay, okay.
Local ownership, we're hoping.
Okay, okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, Mr. McGuire, I have a couple of questions for you. Uh, I didn't see anything in the plans, and like the gentleman here said about the, so that the size was so small, do you have any, uh, addressing for sidewalk construction?
Any, what?
Sidewalk construction?
Uh, not on the street, uh, Judah's pretty cramped with anything like that, uh, you know, there is a, there's a 40-foot easement there, but, uh, it'd be up to the city whether or not something went into that, and it'd be a dead-end sidewalk going from one spot to another, so, we would not see anything on our part for that.
Okay, the reason I clarify is I thought in code, in section nine, that any new construction had to have sidewalks, and there weren't, weren't, weren't any already there, so that's not in code? Can I get a clarification on that?
Yeah, no, I was gonna ask the same thing, so, um, on any new construction, um, the Planning Commission is requiring sidewalks, so, I know you're, you're only, you only have just that small little area, um, but, even though that sidewalk isn't going anywhere, pretty much that, uh, area in front of, like, Legends and whatever?
Yeah.
That, I mean, it's paved, right? Except for in, in that one little area that juts out to the one side, which would be closer to your property, I think it may be gravel in there, that little area, but, um, we've, we need, we have the ability to ask for sidewalks. It's in our code, it's in the city codes as well, so, my only thing would be what Mike is saying, is that on that area, um, the one thing that you don't have is, is, is a sidewalk, um, in that, in that section, so, if by chance, somebody decided to develop a little bit further down, or, um, you know, there were sidewalks all along 62, that section that Legends have, has, could be required to have sidewalks, and then it would join to yours, so you're not responsible, obviously, for anything there, but you would be responsible for a sidewalk in front of your area.
Okay.
So, just to keep, uh, people away from that street, or off that street, um, instead of just walking down that street, so, just kind of a, something that probably hasn't been done in the years past, even though it was able to be done, um...
What, what section are we in?
Section nine, uh, streets and sidewalks.
Oh, okay.
It'll be, uh, 9.08, 040, item number two.
And we could, um, if you'd like, we can go ahead and send that information to you, or you can look it up online.
We could look it up.
Okay.
If, if that's in your orders, we, we would comply with that, I'm not sure how it fits in the picture of Judah, but...
Right.
We, we've done sidewalks in other areas that went, started nowhere and went nowhere.
Yeah.
And it's not your responsibility to make sure it's done, you know, for that mile or two, but, it's been lacking for years, so...
And, we're, we're talking about on Judah.
Yeah, we're talking about on Judah, so, this, where Judah is right here, and this is 62, we would be right here.
Okay, now, this, you know, this parcel's a separate parcel.
Right.
Okay, and, and it's only 124 feet, plus our drive entry point, so, we would sidewalk, on our site plan there, we would sidewalk this site.
See what I'm looking at, Tom? It would have to be a sidewalk here.
Yeah.
So, so, it would be on the long side of that triangle.
Right.
Right up along Judah Street is where you would need that sidewalk.
For, for this side?
For this side, yes.
That's our...
Yep.
I have a couple more questions.
Go ahead.
Could you, uh, I mean, thank you very much for that, uh, also, I drove down Judah Street, and it is, you know, a little one lane virtually down the end, and there's no turnaround back there, I mean, I had to, I think, drive on somebody's yard to get turned back around in there, uh, how do you see the construction impeding traffic coming in and out of Judah just to get, because there's only one way in, I mean, is there gonna be, there's no way to turn around down there, construction vehicles are gonna have plenty of time to be able to turn around without having to back out into 62?
Uh, yeah, the, the, this site has plenty of turnaround on it for construction, I mean, it's a small-scale construction.
Yeah, and, and the speed you're gonna get done, it's not gonna impede the traffic com, the residents coming through?
Not a bit, in fact, there, there's all kinds of deliveries down there, semi-trucks and...
Okay.
Uh, the cell tower was constructed there, large equipment.
Okay, great, yeah, I just, I drove down there, and I thought, oh, they have a bunch of construction things, those people getting out of here might be trouble, but I'm, I'm sure you've been working on this a lot longer than I had, I, this is a question I had.
They, they still do maintenance on the cell tower, and, and there's substantial areas in several places there that they turn large equipment around.
Okay, well, thank you for that, yeah, there, I had a couple other questions, but once you, I was, you were told that you're gonna sell these versus rent them out, that canceled my question, I was gonna ask some questions about onsite access to maintenance and stuff like that, but if it's a purchase sale, then that doesn't, it's not relevant. Thank you for, for your time. That's all I have, thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions? Okay, so, um, I'm, I'm gonna ask for a couple things, um, Mike has mentioned sidewalks, I've mentioned sidewalks, um, do you all wanna vote to agree or to disagree of requesting him to put a sidewalk in on Judah prior to us approving, and we'll put the, put that as a condition on the approval?
I, I would point out, C2, we're allowed to set these buildings what our norm are along the street frontage, every, every project on Judah there sets right on the property line, I'm assuming everybody understands that, so, the sidewalks would be in the street right-of-way per city allowance and requirements.
And, and, the issue is, is that, you know, all up and down 62...
Yeah.
We have somewhat similar issue as well, that sidewalks weren't put in, so...
Is it gonna need to be on private property, or be on the city property?
It's supposed to be on private property.
That's, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah.
Well, we, every project on Judah there sets on the right-of-way, we have a corner of our building right at our property, which is allowed by code, so, or allowed by, uh, C2.
Yes, sidewalks have to be on private, have to be on the private property.
And the ones, and the ones that are already there were not new construction under this, they were already existing when this, uh, was implemented, so, it's really basic, just covering new construction?
But, but what you're saying is, we're discarding the C2 allowance of a building being placed in, in the, the front setback is allowed to be up to the property line, or what the norm is on the street.
Yeah, I see where, yeah, I mean, I see in your diagram where it is, is there, would there be an issue with you moving that back? I mean, the buildings are built...
Uh, we, we are very tight on the site.
Okay.
There's a 30, there's a 30-foot setback on the rear, we'd be glad to move the building that, and, and I'm assuming this could be a four-foot sidewalk, is that, do we know?
I'd have to look and see what the exact dimensions are, yeah, so...
So, we, we would be glad to move, and we've got a lot of dead space on the back there, on the back of the lot, uh, but essentially, you know, you're saying that we're gonna circumvent the front allowance on setbacks for the requirement of sidewalks, if I understand correctly?
I mean, if you have room on the back side, it shouldn't be an issue though, right?
If, if you guys are good and approve that for us to move that four-foot, or whatever is required for the sidewalk, we'd be good with that.
Right.
We'd, we'd welcome that, in fact, and...
Do you, do y'all have any questions about that?
No, in fact, there's nothing, I mean, there's not, it's not betting up against anything there, so, that's not a problem.
They should be able to just slide it a little bit more, and then put that sidewalk in? Is that what you see, Tom?
Are, are you saying that by moving it back, you'll be, you'll be against some other property?
No, no, we have, the rear setback on this lot is 30 foot, that's code-required rear setback.
And see where it's right here?
And we, we adhere to the 30 foot, but we also adhere to the front setback allowed by C2 under your current, uh, code allowance.
Yeah.
Meaning that our corner of our building is within inches, six inches...
Of Judah.
Of the front, so, to, uh, put that sidewalk on our property, we need to move the building back into that 30 foot, it's, it's very generous, plus, if you know the site, there's a ravine there, and...
That's why I warned you, yeah, it's, it's nothing back there, yeah.
There never will be anything there.
Right, yeah, correct.
My only, my only concern is this, is the sidewalks are a real big issue in town, and they are owner responsibility, and I really support your project, I think it's awesome, we really do need that, but, but then again, we're really trying to push the sidewalk issue with new construction in this town.
Sure.
And I would rather give, if I had the choice, the variance on the setback, rather than not getting the sidewalk.
Yeah.
The, the variance on the setback is really a nebulous thing, I mean, it, moving this building five foot there and accommodating that sidewalk...
I don't think we have to worry about that, he's just gonna have to change his, his plan.
Yeah.
I mean, and not really change it, but, but we'll just make a note that we've required sidewalks.
We'll retool, we'll retool the plan to accommodate that, no problem at all, and, and I, and I hear where you're coming from on the sidewalks, and it's a great idea, it's just that, at some point, someone's gonna wanna know how come they can't set in the setback that the code allows.
Yeah.
But in this case, we can accommodate that very, very nicely.
Yeah, well, we can, we can approve, um, we've done that, and many applicants approved variances on setbacks, so, we can do that.
Okay, um, do y'all feel like we need to vote on that, just to include that, or do you wanna just...
I think we just approve his application.
Approve it, okay.
And then when the construction perm, you know, comes, the building construction thing comes back, we can, we can add the setbacks and all that.
Okay, so, um...
So, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh, the application of new construction for, uh, Two Judah Street.
Second.
All right, so we've got, um, will you include the condition?
Subject, condition.
Sidewalk condition.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, uh, so, I, I make a motion, uh, that we approve the, uh, the commercial, um, construction of Two Judah Street, um, with, with the addition of the sidewalk, and the setback reduction, reduction to, uh, 25 feet.
Second.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second to go ahead and approve Two Judah, and we've got a condition attached to it for sidewalks on, on the Judah side, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, and we'll, just, just for the record, we'll, uh, tweak our site plan to accommodate and show sidewalk where we don't.
Thank you.
And then, um, uh, Kyle, our planning director isn't here tonight, so, um, do you wanna follow up with Kyle, or I'll just ask him to follow up with you to get everything that you need?
Ben.
Will that work for you?
I'll follow up with him in the next couple of days, I assume he's in office.
Uh, what is today?
Not June 14th.
I think by...
He'll be back the 14th?
Oh, okay, we'll, we'll follow up with him there.
Yeah, he was just getting a document.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a regular meeting. Today, today the eight, today's the nine.
We have another public comment, I think, from this young lady.
Yeah, we can do the public comments.
This is a month, we in seven-nine. Application was approved. Four, zero, zero, all right, conditions, um, sidewalk?
Adjacent to Two Judah Street, I guess, or... Should be located on what private property, would it be that precise or not?
Sidewalk adjacent to Judah on private property?
Mm-hmm.
Owner will adjust site plan?
Right, yeah. Public comment?
Uh, yeah, let's go ahead and do public comments, since we've got, he's done, so, I know we're kinda moving around a little bit, uh, public comments, you wanna come up? Just state your name and your address, please?
Yes, Sharon Lawler, 19 Table Rock Drive, Holiday Island, I'm the owner of the Bridgeford House, um, just shortly, um, I understand that one of the commissioners made a comment about, uh, being more apt to, to support residents and not business owners, and so, I'm going to provide you with some documentation that shows you that we're very much involved in the community, even though my physical house right now is in Holiday Island, and so I just wanna provide that to you, um, pictures and paintings by Larry Mansker of our family with the Bridgeford House, our involvement in the community, and, um, just a, a thing here, that, um, on Sunday, my husband's going to be buried in Eureka Springs, so we'll have permanent residency there, um, and then, um, also, I know that, um, last night at the city council meeting, they're calling for a workshop between the Planning Commission and the city council, specifically in regard to the Bridgeford House and parking, so, I'm gonna be giving you copies of the, um, the things that we posted on our front door when they first passed that, in it, that, uh, legislation, um, that shows that we told people where to park, and it was not in the front, and then when we were given the parking permits, that we put a sign up there about that, that sign is still on the door, even though it's not effective right now, I have a little note in the, in the rooms that, those two rooms, that, um, they don't need those parking hangers right now, but I wanna submit that, and then I also want to respectfully request that when you decide with the city council when to hold that workshop, that you do so after the 10th of August, so that my attorney can be there. Thank you.
Can I ask you one other question? I know there may be some people that want to do a site visit, so they can really understand what's behind your property.
Absolutely.
Okay, would you, um, could you provide me with your, um, I'm just gonna walk over there, but I'm gonna ask you for your phone number?
Sure.
And I'll just have you write it on this paper, so that...
Yeah.
If somebody wants to come by, then they can give you a call, and you'll know that that's why they're there?
Absolutely.
Okay, no more public comments? So, let's go into just our regular business, so, uh, number one is the approval of the minutes. Mike, do you want to explain to everybody what, um, do you need to... Mike, do you want to explain to everybody what, do you need to see it again?
No.
Or do you, okay. So, based on the copy that we have, do we have it in our...
Nope, we don't have a copy.
Yeah.
Not the new one, but the old one?
No, you're not, no.
We didn't get the old one either, did we?
Nope, just an email.
Okay, so has everybody had a chance to read it?
Yep.
Did you read the minutes, Tom?
No.
Okay.
Did you read it on my phone?
Yeah, you want to look at...
I don't have my phone, what?
You want to look at Fergie's real quick? Let me see if I can pull it up, too.
Mike, what section was it that was?
Under the planning commission, new business.
A new business, okay.
New business.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there's a conditional use permit, and then there's the information, looks like, about the gun.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Down in the middle of the paragraph, there's a line where she erroneously put that the motion had passed by a 3 to 2 vote.
I see, yes.
Motion?
Yeah.
Oh, this, okay.
She had to correct it that it failed.
That was on the original. And now it says, motion failed 3, 2, 0 by...
First email, she said that it had passed. It was just something I wanted to ensure that we didn't get a conflict.
No, that's kind of a big deal.
I'm glad you caught that, yeah.
Because he could come back later. I mean, I'm not being disrespectful, but I didn't want his lawyer to come back and say, well, the minutes say it passed it.
Or 20 years from now, when they're actually reading it again, they're going to say, but it passed.
Yeah.
I know, we just need to be sure. So thank you for seeing that.
Yep.
All right, so we've got approval of the minutes. Everybody knows where the change was made.
Right, right.
Can we...
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes that we received at email form.
So the amended?
For the amended email, yeah.
A second.
All right, we've got an approval and a second to approve the amended city, or the amended minutes from our, is it June 11th?
June 11th.
From our June 11th meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're done with that. Okay. The item on B&amp;B code updates. Ann's not here, Ann's been working on those, but we do need to be aware that that moratorium on B&amp;Bs run out, it runs out at the end of July. So I would just ask that we could make a motion and vote to send, okay, just...
Can I make, just...
Sure.
Can I make a discussion at one point?
Sure.
When Kyle sent that letter, email showing the issues that are going on in other tourist cities, Hot Springs and Bentonville, where even though it's not really considered tourists, Hot Springs has actually put a cap, legal cap, on the amount they're having on a moratorium. They said, this is a cap we're going to, they've got 40,000 people in population, they put a cap of 500 short-term rentals of any kind, that's all, 500. They, given that number, that means that they have one short-term rental for every 80 residents, that's what they based it on. If we use that same comparison and put a cap on it, we would have, they would only have, we would have a cap of only 30. Because as it stands right now, with our, did the math, it was hard to do, right now we have almost a double occupancy rate of short-term rentals to housing. We have one for every 50.
Yeah.
So instead of having, they have one for every 80 people, we have almost twice the amount of short-term rentals based on population than Hot Springs. So, and since theirs is a precedent, there is a precedent here, if we put a cap on it, it would already be, we wouldn't be making the first time. They've researched this, and it's legal for them to put a cap on the amount. I would like to have part of the discussion be discussing a cap, and then have that cap reevaluated every 10 years with the census. If our population increases significantly, we can increase the amount of the cap. But that's just something for discussion.
Yeah.
So I think Ann had some of that.
Okay.
And I know you just got on planning, so I know she's got some changes, I just haven't seen them.
Sure, I just wanted to make it...
So, but that is, that is helpful. I mean, I did read the same thing. And we've talked about putting a cap on how many are allowed in residential, or how many are allowed just throughout the city and whatnot.
I mean, we just don't want to keep having people get and get new ones, unless we have a cap or a moratorium, as long as they follow the guidelines, you have to really approve everyone.
Well, the moratorium, just what the moratorium is doing, so we just need to vote on whether or not we'll put it on city council's agenda, and that we're either going to have something from Ann that can be presented to city council. I mean, obviously, we don't have anything to even look at.
That's...
But city council needs to get it on their agenda before it runs out. So I think what we should be doing is asking for a extension. I know we've already done that, but since we don't have our paperwork done, I mean, there's no guarantee that they'll give us an extension, because we've already asked for it already, but what do, I mean, what do you all think?
Well, I think the motion, just to present an update to the city council at their next meeting is appropriate. I mean, just so they'll have information, so they won't go, we won't run off the runway, so to speak.
Okay, so while we're doing that, though, do you think we should, at the same time, request an extension on the moratorium? Because it will run out.
I think, I think, you know, I agree with Mike. I think a moratorium extension would be the safest thing to do.
Until we can discuss the procedure for putting a potential cap.
Right.
Yeah, because the problem is, at their next meeting, we're not going to have a meeting, so we won't even have a chance to review what Ann has.
Right.
So I think, at the very minimum, it's just a request for an extension on the moratorium.
Right, yeah. So I think my motion that we send a note to the city council to extend the moratorium for 90 days.
For 90 days? You think that sounds okay, Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got a motion, did I get a second?
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second to go ahead and send a request to city council for their next upcoming meeting, which would be, what day would that be?
It's two weeks from Monday, or one, yeah, two weeks from Monday, so whatever that is.
Today's the 9th, their meeting was on the 8th, their next meeting will be the 22nd.
Okay, there you go.
So we've got a motion and a second to request at their July 22nd meeting, a extension on the B&amp;B moratorium for 90 days.
Yep.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll do that. And then hopefully, that'll give us enough time to get with Ann. I know she's been working with Forrest, so hopefully, they'll have something by then.
Can I have a question on something?
Sure.
Procedure, is it acceptable for us, being on the commission, to make public comments at a city council meeting regarding something like this?
Yes.
So if I was, I could go up there and say, I have public comments, and these are the, okay, thank you.
You could say, I'm in support of, or...
Yeah, yeah, what I do, like, when I was bringing up, because they were going to throw out the ordinance, and I said, well, I'm coming at you as a, as a planning commissioner, but also as, you know, so you kind of identify yourself, so they know that it's kind of official.
Okay.
So, yeah.
I just did not want to conflict from one agency to another, you know, speaking out of turn, so.
No, it does, it does, there's some collusion there, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have anything on B&amp;B?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Sidewalks. So, we kind of talked a little bit about it tonight on this commercial property.
Yeah.
On that application, if you look at their application, I also updated the PUD application. I sent it over to Kyle, there's a copy of it in your, okay, if you look at the one at Judah, you'll see that the application requirements list does not say anything about sidewalks.
Right, ooh, yeah.
So even though it's in our code, and it allows us, we're allowed to ask for sidewalks, I've said many times that these forms need to be updated, because there is no checkbox on here that says they have to have a sidewalk.
Yep.
Do you have something I can add to that?
Sure.
But if you go further into your packet, on the Eureka Springs planned unit development application?
Okay, wait a minute, let me get to that one.
Okay. And I thought about this, too, so. Where it says, it's a blank form, they haven't filled out anything on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one I tried to update.
Yeah, if you, once you get to it, if you look down to number four.
Right, sidewalks.
I've got too many papers in my pile here.
Sorry about that, it's going to be past that.
Oh, here it is, okay, got it.
If you look down to overall plan number four, it is highlighted and emboldened.
Okay, that's what I added.
Okay, good.
So this is a draft on the PUD. There are three applications, I think, we have. We have the commercial one, we have the PUD, and then we have the subdivision, right?
That's right.
Okay, I haven't done the subdivision one yet, but the one thing that was missing on the PUD application was the application fee, and I know my numbers aren't right. And then I added location of sidewalks with dimensions and surfacing.
Okay.
So it's exactly the same as streets, it just says it's sidewalks. And so it's just a checkbox. It's just a reminder to us that that is something that we should be asking. If we decide we don't want to require it, or maybe for some reason the site can't accommodate it, then we can always do a variance.
Absolutely.
Right?
That's exactly.
But as long as it's there, they understand that it's required.
That's right. And he, and he had already looked at, that particular applicant had looked at the code, so it was great, because, I mean, that is a plus in my book. If someone's already looking at our code before someone throws it at them, that's great. So he already knew our setback requirement.
Right, and if you look at, I think it's in here, where does it say? I thought it said in here, I thought this was the one, maybe it's the one for subdivision. It actually says in there that we can, we could, we can request sidewalks.
Yeah.
But I don't see it here, in this one.
I didn't see it here.
Do you see it on his application?
Nope.
No, I don't see it anywhere on application.
I don't see it in the municipal code, do you?
I did a word search for sidewalks, and the only reference I got was for that one you added, I guess on that other form we were discussing earlier.
Yeah, the one.
Yeah, there's really...
It's, maybe it's under the overall ordinance, that we just have to maybe list that. It doesn't say that on here. So anyway, if you guys think that that PUD one is fine, then we'll probably just make sure it says it's similar on all of our applications then.
Absolutely, yeah.
And then it just asks for, that it's clear on what the application fee is, because this one didn't have it, and then it's clear that one of the items that they have to provide us is location of sidewalks.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah.
I couldn't tell on his application, but on the subdivision that we approved for Jay Guston, he had to move back off of the street and give the utilities about 15 to 20 feet. So, you know, that pushed his lots, you know, building lots, you know, back, too. Also, I couldn't tell from Mr. McGuire, whether he had that same palm or not, on whether utilities are on Judah Street, yeah. But, you know, Jay did lose some land there, because they wanted, you know, water and sewer and the gas company all wanted their own requirements there. I think he undergrounded electric, too, so I think the electric and gas, you got to be, I think, separated something and another, you know, something to feed, so he lost some profit on the front.
Do we, do we need to make a motion to adopt this new form?
Yeah, if we can make a motion to go ahead and approve the PUD application, and then we'll bring the other ones back to view as well.
I don't, I don't know how to properly ask for a motion.
Just say, I make a motion to approve the PUD draft.
Right.
I move to adopt the revised PUD draft application, to clarify the application fee and the location of the sidewalks to be added to the requirements for this development application.
A second.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the changes to the PUD application. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I'll go back to my list. New ordinances.
Yep, 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 that's me. So, you ready?
Oh, hold on.
Okay.
Sidewalks. You all had in your packet an assessment plan.
Oh, the assessment plan, yes.
Okay. So, you remember when Main Street did their sidewalk survey?
Right, they're still, they've got something else going on next week, I think, or something. They're on Facebook.
I think I did see something on that. But they've, they've gotten all of the forms in, and they're tallying that information This is a draft of what could be used to further that information. So when we originally talked about it, Jackie said that she was going to tally all of the information, and then she was going to present it to planning.
Okay.
And then the hope is, is that planning will do something with it. Kyle put together this sidewalk assessment plan to see what you all thought of how we could move forward with sidewalks in Eureka Springs.
Yep.
So, that's why that's in here.
Okay.
I know you probably haven't had a chance to really read it, and I think, once we get the information back, then we'll have more info to kind of figure out how we can use that data that we, that we get from Main Street, but that's why this is here.
That's what I was, I was curious as to what this referred to, so, thanks for clarifying that.
I don't think we really need to talk about it tonight. I just think, you know, if you get a chance to kind of read through it, see what you think, and then, like, under the data collection and analysis, the walkability data collection study, that's, that was that, that survey. So can we do something with that information? We should be able to do something with that information, but it will be something that we'll have to get more than just planning involved. But I figure it's here, you can look at it, and then when we get the data, we can kind of figure out what we want to do. All right, Fergie?
Yep. Crypto mining and wind power.
Kyle was trying to get some extra information, right?
Yeah, yeah, so one thing, though, I did discover, I talked to some other city leaders out there in our general area, I won't mention who they were, but one of the things that came up was, we have a unique situation in Eureka, and that's the conditional use permit system. So the conditional use permit system, right now, would, would be our method for prohibition or approval of anything outside of the norm. So windmill, the wind farm and bit mining would be outside the norm. So just as we used, they used it for the gun permitting, the CUP process, which it says in the ordinance, it basically, kind of like, if it doesn't fit the norm, then that's where you fall into. And that's kind of where it falls in, so that whole CUP process could be used, because then you use the check sheet, where it talks about power, it talks about water, it talks about land use, and it talks about neighborhood, does it fit in the neighborhood? So I think, kind of, we don't really need to create an ordinance with our CUP process in place.
I think you do, because the CUP process is not working.
Well, I, I mean...
I mean, you sat there the night and saw poor people sit there.
I know, I know, I know what you're saying, I just, I mean, it's definitely, it's definitely got a bumpy road.
Yeah, I don't understand.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, the C, it should have, well, and I, yeah, we're in agreement, it should have worked, but it didn't work.
Yeah, and the other issue, too, is that zoning, so.
Right.
We'd have to, we'd have to add a use, or add a CUP to every one of these zones to say, you either can and you can't.
Right, right, no, I understand, and that's the, kind of, the thing, so, because basically, you know, I talked with some people out of Harrison, and I said, well, you know, you created an ordinance anti-Bitcoin, but then it got thrown out by the state when they rewrote that law. So, you know, that's the only, that's the kind of a thing, if we, if we structure too narrowly, then we're going to end up falling out. Now, the current, it did get signed by the governor's office, the modified one that you got a copy of, that did get signed by the governor. So that one, we could maybe set up, as far as bit mining, to endorse, have the city endorse that, or do a resolution to say, we, we want to, you know, we conform, or we agree with this, or whatever. this, or whatever. But that ordinance is kind of, basically says that we have the power to deny it if we want to.
Yep, I understand.
And that's what that ordinance basically says. The local municipalities has the power to deny an application if they want to put one in their, in their city.
But then, even if we did that, though, we'd still have to look at the zones.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
And there'd have to be a, an approved use allowed, I mean, because I doubt there would be anything in.
Do we have an industrial zone here somewhere?
I think it's just the, I think it's just the water treatment area. There's a little, little spot out there. But, you know, like the residential, we'd.
Right.
I mean, we wouldn't have to add a use there, because we just would say, it's not allowed. I mean, it's just not a use that's allowed there.
Yeah, it would, I think, because, because just that, the operation would be large enough where it'd have to be in a commercial zone. I couldn't think of, physically, it couldn't be anywhere else.
But what commercial zone?
Well, that's what I mean.
Because I mean, some of them are pretty, right?
You're right, yeah.
To your, to your point, I agree, but just like when you put the, the reasons for a CUP into whatever zone, if you did something like the industrial zone, if you put one of their condition, use permit uses as relating to crypto mining and wind power, they could apply for the CUP for that within that zone, but then we have the right to approve or deny it.
Right.
Exactly your point.
That's exactly what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, but it would only have to be entered into the one where it says.
Right.
Whatever the commercial zoning is.
Right, but you certainly don't want to give the impression that you're going to add it as a use, but we're just never going to approve it.
No, 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 that gets, no, just, you're just worried.
If we could, just not, just allow it if we can under the state law.
Right, well, right now, the, that, as far as Bitcoin, that looks like that's done. They've defined that. But wind is still in the wind, so to speak, if you will, but it's, the wind farm situation is still.
It's almost like nobody wants to take it.
Well, yeah, it's kind of like, yeah, they're waiting for something to break, I think, or somebody really, you know, but, but yeah, it's, and it's going through multiple states who are having the same problem, and so it's not just Arkansas, but.
It's probably because everybody called the ones that already haven't.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, they're like, hmm, I don't know about that.
But what we're, what we're doing by adding it with the CUP is we're giving the public the chance to have input through a public statements.
Right.
And give his opinion, rather than just arbitrarily granting it. We're not denying them or excluding them, we're just allowing, with our CUP exclusion, to allow the public to have an input on a decision whether to approve or deny. I'm not saying that we're setting it up in any way.
And I think the, I can't remember the ratio, but it's like so many negative no's, and there's a percentage, you know?
It's, okay, so when, when, say, somebody is applying for, we'll just say, a bed and breakfast.
Right.
Those applications, or not the applications, those letters go out that say, this property is applying for a bed and breakfast CUP.
Right.
Whoever's within 200, is it 200 or 250?
I think it's 200.
200 feet.
Yeah.
250, 200, no, it's 200 foot feet.
Something, yeah.
They get a letter that says this property is, is, has applied for a B and B. If you are for or you're against, then you have the opportunity to voice it in public comments, and you have the opportunity to voice it through a letter.
Right.
Read into the minutes. The ones that have been sent a certified letter that are within 200 feet are the ones that go into that calculation. So if there's 20 people.
That's right.
That received it, then if four of, is it four?
Twenty, 20% of them.
Four of them said they didn't want it, that would hit your 20% threshold.
Right, kills it right there.
And so then what happens is, we have to have a certain number of commissioners to vote against it.
Right.
To override that.
Based on that issue in order to deny it. They can appeal it still to city council if they want.
That's right.
But, you know, an example is, when we went through a few other cups here recently, is that you can get 100 people come up and say they don't want something, right?
But they have to.
But the most important ones are the ones that actually live in the neighborhood that have been sent that certified. Not that the other ones aren't important.
Right.
But that's how that thing plays through, and we've, we've, I know I've been on planning before where we've gotten over 20% that didn't want it, and we've denied it.
Yeah.
Because the neighborhood didn't want it. Those people directly, you know, in that zone didn't want it.
If the neighborhood doesn't want it, the neighborhood doesn't want it.
Yeah.
That didn't enter into the gun deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Anyway, that's where we're at, so, like I said, I think the, the wind farm thing, I'm still, still, still waiting on somebody to, you know, something to happen, but right now, it looks like it, it's going to happen in Green Forest, but no one can tell me when. And so they gave the lane, they gave the road use approval.
I read that too.
So, so, and I told them, I told the neighbors down there, until they see the overbuild of the road, because it's got to be built over, that it didn't, they're not, not sending the trucks, you know? So that's the only thing about.
Didn't Carol Lecter say they're not buying the power from it?
Well, that's right, Carol Lecter did say they were, they were not scheduled to, and they weren't expected to within the near term, is what the answer was. So I don't know, what's the point? I mean, it's like, what's the point?
I think, I think it's a tax credit deal.
Yeah, I think it is. I really, I really agree. That whole Green Forest thing is.
They don't really care whether it works or not, as long as they get the tax credits done.
That, that, that may be, that may be, just a federal grab, but.
Do you want to leave?
Oh, and that's the other thing, is the, the federal government, so in another state, the Bureau of Land Management, in, I believe it was Washington State, took 5,000 acres to put wind farms on, even though everyone in the entire county and 15,000 respondents responded or negative, anyway, said they didn't want it. And so the federal government says, too bad, we're going to put it there. And I was like, whoa, so that's the other problem that Arkansas is going to have, is any land in Arkansas that is Department of Land and Bureau controlled, and, which is, we've got a section right up here north of Honest Cave Road that is an agricultural study farm about, with 30 acres out there, no, no, 100 acres out there. And so they could.
Let's hope it's all slow.
It is, it's all hills, it is, it's all over the place. So there's no level ground there at all. But anyway, I just thought that was interesting to find out that, I listened to a senator yelling at the lady from Department of Land and Bureaus that, who wants this? And, and she couldn't answer him straight, she just, we're going to do it. I mean, that was it. And he said, well, my entire state doesn't want it. So it's kind of, wow, so, interesting things, so I'm not sure where that's going to go.
So do you want to leave those two items on there?
Leave it on this until we get, I mean, you know, get a little bit more, and then I will try to see what I can write up as far as a Bitcoin thing, specifically to Bitcoin, and then we'll see if it, you know, like I said, I like the cup idea, but I think we hit on the head, maybe it's not working as well as we thought it would be. But, so something in there that just specifically for that, because it.
At least so there's something on the books.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, I don't know if, did you hear me when we were talking about, I know I've got the annexation, but I just wanted to say that we're going to get a different draft?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, because that's, that's it, because, yeah, and I, I'm looking at a different area after talking to the mayor, so I'm just, it's just interesting.
Okay, so we don't have anything else besides agenda, so it looks like we're going to, I guess we'll leave the tree cut on there, ask Kyle what, what's going on with that.
Okay.
Ann's going to come back.
Right.
With, hopefully, the next meeting with her updates. I won't be here, we're going to, we're going to leave the, I don't know, maybe I'll leave the sidewalk thing on there, maybe I won't. Crypto mining and wind power will stay, and then hopefully by then we'll have a, an update on the annexation.
Yep.
Does anybody else want to add anything else to the agenda?
No.
No? Okay, so Mike, do you have any commissioner comments?
Other than the, all of the fireworks displays and everything, I think everybody went well. I was busy doing something for, for July, so I didn't get to attend the jamboree, but everybody said it was great out there, Leatherwood was great. We went the next night out on the lake and saw the fireworks display for Holiday Island, and everybody just seemed to have a wonderful time, so it was very successful. And that's all.
Tom?
No comments.
Fergie?
Well, only thing I've got is I'm disappointed that we lost our code officer. The, the, the situation, you know, it took us a while to get a really qualified candidate in there, and he was there for about two years, and I think he did a bang-up job while he was here. I hope we can find another one soon. There's still a lot more work to be done in that area, and so, but I do, you know, I understand that the mayor did what he had to do, and I have to respect him for that, so, but I just wish we hadn't lost our code guy. Anyway, that's all I've got.
Yeah, I, I don't have anything. I hope we see Ann at next meeting. I hope she feels better, so can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, got a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, meeting adjourned.